Good evening, everyone. I'll call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, July 8th, 2021. I'd like to invite Robert Jones, if you'll come forward and provide our invocation and lead us in our pledge. If everyone will stand.
Let's pray. God, I want to thank you so very much for giving us this opportunity to come and meet with you at the heart and the base of all of our decisions. God, we pray that you'll guide and lead our leaders in the direction that you see fit for this community and for our city. God, I want to thank you for everything that you have done for us in the past and in the future. We thank you. There's nothing else we can say for the ones that are on the panel. We love you. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Here.
Councilmember Cagle.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
City Manager Dorsey.
Here.
City Attorney Litchford.
Here.
All right, we'll move to item four. I believe everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes of the June 24th, 2021. I will entertain a motion for the minutes.
I make... Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve?
A second.
You have a motion to approve by Councilmember Hilton and a second by Vice Mayor Chauncey. Do we have any discussion or corrections? I see none. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Move to item five, communications from citizens. This is an opportunity for any citizen or business owner to come forward and address the council with any concerns, questions, or accolades, and they'll have five minutes to do so. First, we have Friends of East Ridge Animal Services. If you'll come forward and give us your name and address.
Catherine Pross.
Can you just make sure that's on, and can you speak into it so we can hear?
Just pull it down.
Yeah, if you need to pull it down a little bit.
Okay.
No pressure.
Catherine Pross, 187 Haley's Cove Road, Chickamauga, Georgia.
Go ahead and state the business and the business address, because that is actually in East Ridge, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. The business is about East Ridge obtaining property for an animal shelter.
Well, I mean, it's Friends of East Ridge, and then can you give me the address?
I'm sorry, what's our address?
It's 1232A Greenslake Road.
Thank you. We just got to get it recorded.
Okay, that's okay.
Go ahead.
Good evening. We are Friends of East Ridge Animal Services. When we started our group in 2015, our main goal was to help as we could in the process of getting a new animal shelter in the city of East Ridge. We also strive to help the citizens of East Ridge be aware of how desperately a new shelter was needed. That remains our goal today. This evening, we are asking that the council vote yes on resolution number 3169 and proceed in the process of purchasing property at 5302 Stone Street for the purpose of building a new animal control facility. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next we have signed in is Gary Nud. Yes, sir, if you'll come forward, give us your name and your address, please.
My name is Gary Nud. My address is 5310 Clemens Road. And I got to be honest, my comments are maybe a little premature. I was hoping to be able to hear the discussion in reference to the animal shelter, and that may answer all my concerns. And I just wasn't sure if I need to sign in now. If I have questions during that discussion, can I ask them at that point?
No, sir. This is the only opportunity for citizen input.
Okay. That being the case, and it's in reference to the animal shelter, and I don't believe I'm opposed to it. I'm one of the owners of Southern Heritage Assisted Living, and our property is right up next kitty corner to theirs. That piece of property, corner, and my property touch each other. And we have 55 elderly residents that live there, and I just have a very genuine concern of the adverse impact that's going to be from the noise aspect. In other words, dogs barking and things like that, residents trying to sleep, and I don't know if that's going to be an issue. There's not been any information that I've been able to determine what the building's going to be like and if it's enclosed, but I just have a genuine concern that this council at least take into consideration how it's going to impact the businesses that have invested years and years of dollars and taxes. Because with our business, it could have a very negative impact. Thank you.
Thank you. I will address some of those, and if council wants to address. It is early stages. We've been looking for some property for quite some time. We had an opportunity that fell through in a close proximity of where this lot is, but it is very, very early in the stages. We don't have any... First, it has to pass by majority, but we don't have any designs or anything for the building, but there has been discussions for quite some time, and I don't know if our city manager wants to weigh in, but that is something that's near and dear to my heart, and I'm sure other council members, that, you know, we want to not have any concerns or issues with noise and/or smell. You know, I believe I'm totally in favor, and I'm sure everyone else is, of having, you know, inside housing for the dogs. Now, there'll be walk areas and play areas, but they would be housed, you know, interior is my hope and my design for the plan. And I don't think, you know, depending on the positioning of the building, it could be, you know, I'm not sure if it's going to be toward the back of your facility, or it's going to be in the middle or closer. We're in early stages of it, but we're going to do all efforts not to impact businesses, not just for the business aspect, but for us as well, to attracting new businesses and keeping existing businesses up and operational. So we want to be a good partner, but we also in dire need of a new animal shelter. Anything?
No, that pretty much covers it. I talked to Mr. Nod a little while ago, and we had a real good conversation, I thought, and I tried to let him know what I knew at this time. You know, our biggest first step is securing the property.
Yes, but that's the last thing they'll do is impact our citizens and our business owners as well.
Yeah, because, I mean, it has the potential to eliminate the use of one of our buildings that's that close to one. Yeah, I wish this was not.
Understood. Thank you, sir. That is all that we had on the list. However, if there's anyone else who would like to come forward, you'll have an opportunity now if you'd like to. Anybody in the audience? I see no one else, so I will now move into...
Please.
Yes, ma'am. If you'd like to come forward. I'm sorry, I didn't see you. If you'll give me your name, state your name and your address.
Yes, my name is Teresa Ireland, 1511 Rebecca Drive, and I am the owner of Colony Apartments, so we would be on the other side of the fence to the animal control facility. And I really just have the same thoughts as Mr. Nud, really. Again, not necessarily against a facility, just concerned for our tenants, many of who are also elderly and who have been there a long time, same concerns, just noise, odor, those sorts of things. I understand that there does need to be a facility, and there's one really needed, and I understand that. Really just have the same concerns that he does.
Understand.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone else? All right, I see no one. So I will move to communications of council members. So, start on this side. Councilmember Cagle?
Yes, sir, I have a couple. I drove down North Smith Road the other day. Whoever's doing the checking on the street cuts and stuff needs to go back and recheck them, because they're just thinking, especially the ones that were asphalted, the ones that's concreted are still up, but the ones that's asphalted out to the center line, they have sunk real bad, and it's all up and down North Smith Road there. And then also at 1402 North Smith.
May I ask something real quick, dealing with that? Are these recent street cuts? Can you tell, or are they old street cuts?
Asphalt looks new.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But the dips need to be checked, whether they're new or old. We need to do something about it, because...
Oh, yeah, but the method of how we would address it, there's two different ways.
All right, then at 1402 North Smith, down in front of that house, the asphalt has been beat plum out of the road. Looks like about a 10 by 10 square, and it's all the way down to the rock, the sub road thing, so that needs to be checked. Then at the corner of McCall and Lansdale, looks like the water company went in there and worked on a water line or a fire hydrant, and that is the same way as that is at 1402. It's all the way down to the sub base. The asphalt's completely gone. It's about a 10 that goes up past the center line of the road, so...
I'll find out if there's been any permits pulled on that. Sometimes when the water company has an emergency, they don't pull a permit until later, depending on what it is. And if it's just the sub base, it could be where they're letting it, they put the sub base down, I'm getting nods, where they're letting it settle and make sure everything is done correctly there before they put the final layer of asphalt on it. Yeah, they put the asphalt bill down, then they'll come back and have to let it dry. We've been actually looking at that, maybe, we have a year... Sorry. We've been looking at the street cut, how we've been operating on those lately. And before Kenny left, we had talked about, you know, there's basically a year warranty on those street cuts. If anything happens in a year, they have to replace it. We're looking at a two-year timeframe on that now. That way, it's given... Because you really don't see that settlement until, you know, about one year, actually, in some instances, so we're looking into that as well, Jackie.
The North Smith is bad.
I'll take care of all that tomorrow.
1402 is down there where it makes the curve that goes around into McCall. It's the last house on the right, I think it is.
Is that where... Okay, so where the duplexes are at, there on the corner?
There's a duplex, but this is right in front of a house.
I'll take care of it tomorrow.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Chauncey.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Hilton?
Nothing at this time.
Councilmember Witt?
I just wanted to remind everybody about the 100 Year Celebration that East Ridge is having in September, and we're going to need some volunteers, and we're having a volunteer meeting on Friday, July 16th, and we're going to meet at McBrien, the old McBrien Elementary School, and we're going to pass out flyers and hang some signs. So if anybody out there is interested in volunteering, get in touch with me. We need all the help we can get.
Thank you. I was showing the flyer. Thank you. First, let me go ahead and say that for the month of June, we did not have any employee milestone anniversaries. Otherwise, they would be recognized at this meeting. Then I'll mention Pandora Open House. That's going to be July the 9th, which is tomorrow from 11 until Saturday, the 10th to 2:00 p.m. We're very excited to have Pandora here in East Ridge, so welcome everyone to come check out the new building. And the grand opening will follow later with a later date. This is just of an open house at this point, and details are to come about that grand opening event later. Then Saturday is a jam-packed event or events at Camp Jordan. There'll be a cruise-in and toy collectible show. This is to support the East Ridge Need Your Child Fund. Again, it's July the 10th. Three events, from 8:00 to 1:00, it'll be a swap meet. From 9:00 to 4:00 is a collectible toy show, and from 4:00 to 8:00 will be a cruise-in. There'll be food trucks and flatables, homemade ice cream, choo-choo kettle corn. It'll be lots of fun for the whole family. $5 admission to go in to the, I believe, the collectible or the swap meet, and that, again, benefits the East Ridge Need Your Child Fund. Then, I mentioned it for several weeks, and we'll continue, the Balloon Glow Event is Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, July the 30th to August the 1st. Gates open at 5:30. There'll be tether rides from 6:00 to 9:00, and then the Balloon Glow Event will be from 8:30 to 9:30. They're anticipating the sunset will be at 8:57, so that'll be, that should be awesome to see these balloons. And then the last one I had was the Centennial Celebration, which Councilmember Witt already covered. And then, Councilmember Cagle, totally in agreement. That's been something that the city manager is very aware that I have... Street cuts are very near and dear to my heart, and monitoring those and keeping those up to date, and the responsible party responsible for repairing it then takes that burden off of us and any exposures that we may have to do to come back after the fact with taxpayer dollars. So, thank you for bringing those up. If anyone sees any, please, as the city manager mentioned, sometimes they don't get the permit in due case of emergency, and sometimes they kind of conveniently forget. So any assistance, letting us know if new street cuts would be beneficial for us to hold them responsible for cutting up our streets. That's all I have. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have much today. Just happy, as we like to say, Happy Fiscal New Year. For me and Diane, that means a lot, to start everything over. I do just want to mention, I'm sorry I missed the last meeting and missed Kenny's last meeting. I watched it on YouTube later and saw everything with that, and so I'll let him know. We still see him around, and we still have a lot of business we have to conduct with him, but I just wish him well on his future endeavors. With Kenny's leaving the city, I've done a little realignment for the moment, dealing with the areas within Public Works and Codes. Michael Howell is going to be my interim director of Community Services. I don't like that the Community Services title, but we couldn't think of anything better at the moment. And with that, he will be over Codes and the Animal Control, the area of Animal Control. So Michael will be the interim director for those two areas. The areas of street traffic and sanitation will fall under me to handle for the time being, and so that's how we're going to deal with that. So if you have any issues, obviously, you can email those to me, or you're welcome to email them to Mr. Howell. I'm sure he doesn't have a filter on his computer, so I'm sure he'll accept your emails. So...
Congratulations.
So congratulations. Just wanted to mention that. And that's basically all I have. Oh, I do want to thank Andi for talking about the Centennial and stuff. Now, another month and a half or so, I'm going to think of another project to get her involved in, because we've had the census for a year, Centennial for almost a year, so we'll try to think of something else for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we don't have any old business, so we'll move into item nine, new business. Item eight under nine, resolution number 3162.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to accept the 2022 Local Government Direct Appropriation Grant from the State of Tennessee.
Yes, this is just having y'all accept it. We're going to use it to purchase police vehicles.
Most of it will be used for that.
Yes.
There's a little bit left over at the end, but yeah, almost all of it will be used for police vehicles.
Thank you.
And that's the 246,000...
Yes.
246, 749.
749, and we should get it by the end of the month.
Awesome. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion for resolution 3162.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion approved by Vice Mayor Chauncey and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion? I see none. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Resolution 3162 passed. Move to item B, resolution number 3163.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, accepting a proposal from MSE Amateur Group Chattanooga Red Wolves for soccer field utilization and programming services.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. The proposal for the soccer field utilization and programming services for the Camp Jordan soccer fields was received on June 29th of 2021. We had two submitters, the Chattanooga Football Club Academy and MSE Amateur, which is the affiliate of the Chattanooga Red Wolves, part of the Chattanooga Red Wolves, excuse me. Both organizations had very good submittals, and bullet notes summary of each is attached. I put behind the agenda memo on your packets, along with the actual full submitted proposals from both groups. Both groups have proposed to take over and run the recreation soccer program and to expand soccer participation in the park. The Red Wolves also plan to introduce other competitive sports, which can utilize fields during the year, such as kickball and flag football. Both organizations have school involvement as part of their proposal as well. The Red Wolves plan to have clinics and coaching in addition as help for our East Ridge schools. Compensation, the Red Wolves proposed a $300,000 minimum investment over five years, which would utilize nine of our fields, which is almost all of the fields, which basically comes out to about $6,667 per field per year. The CFC Academy wishes to lease six fields at $5,000 per field per year, or to continue running them at the $20 per hour. Capital improvements show a bigger disparity, with CFCA pledging $50,000 over the life of the agreement to maintain the park, while the Red Wolves proposed $10,000 the first year for maintenance equipment, $5,000 per year after that for playing and surf enhancements, always like aeration and top dressing, things of that nature, and to work with public-private partnerships to improve ADA access, drainage issues, and other improvements to make the park more tournament-friendly. The vision of programming for field usage for the future, plus higher yearly compensation, along with introducing other sports to utilize fields with the help of Chattanooga Sports Council downtown Chattanooga Sports, are the reasons that I recommended the approval of the Red Wolves proposal by the City Council. We're very excited about this. This helps us to fulfill part of the mission that we had when we had our retreat, dealing with working on sports tourism, which will also help drive business consumption within the city of East Ridge and help us in those areas, and which will also help in sales taxes and other areas and things of that nature. So we think this will have a good economic impact on the city. In addition, I don't think I mentioned it on the front page, but I did in the bullets, they're proposing roughly seven major tournaments or events during the year that would be happening at the facility, which is great, one of those being a big clinic. What do I call it here? Yeah, a college ID camp, which I think is very important for some of our young soccer players to be able to work their way up through recreation, through the academy levels and maybe into other areas. So this is a very good opportunity for us to be able to move forward. We want to make sure we did proposals for this reason, to see what we would be able to accomplish with both of these groups, and we're very, very happy with what we received from the Red Wolves. I think Derek Green is here as well today, if anybody has any questions for him, but that is where we're sort of looking. And this is the actual proposal, and I want to get approval from the council to accept that proposal, at which time we will sit down, as it is a proposal, to fine-tune some things in there and to move forward with an agreement that would be brought forth to the council in the future, the near future.
Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion for resolution number 3163.
I make a motion to approve resolution number 3163.
A second.
Have a motion to approve by Councilmember Witt and a second by Vice Mayor Chauncey. Do we have any discussion? I see none. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Well, I had personally rather stayed with the Chattanooga Football and Ball Club for the simple reason of all of the recommendations. They've got the restaurants, the fast food people up and down Camp Jordan Parkway, the relationship they've all got with them, and I'm voting no.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Resolution number 3163 approved. Move to item C, resolution 3164.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the city to purchase seven 2021 Ford vehicles from Lonnie Cobb Ford to the Tennessee Department of General Services statewide contracting listing number 209 pursuant to Tennessee Code annotated 12-3-1201B.
Mayor Council, the police department's requesting purchase one 2021 Ford Interceptor SUV and six Ford F-150 Super Crew Cab trucks from Lonnie Cobb Ford on the Tennessee State Vehicle Contract.
Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion for resolution 3164.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to approve by Vice Mayor Chauncey and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion? I see none. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution 3164 passed. We'll move to item D, resolution 3165.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing participation by the City of East Ridge in the Houston-Galveston Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Program known as the HGAC Buy.
Yes, this is another purchasing cooperative. There's like three or four of them out there, and it's the Houston-Galveston area. I've never heard of Galveston. That's a new one to me. I'll pay for that comment later, I'm sure, from the city attorney. The Houston-Galveston Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Program. This is, I've used this program before in another city to buy garbage trucks. This helps because these cooperatives have already done the bidding for certain items within certain categories, and we're able to utilize this in addition to, it helps complement what we are able to do with our state purchasing laws and everything else to be able to use some of these. This one in particular is for Chief Williams, for some of the equipment that he needs to get, which a lot of it is single source, but a lot of it may have one or two bidders that would have not been anywhere from this area, that we might not have received bids from them anyway, but being able to use the cooperative, they have already selected these bids. And these are things that he wants to be able to purchase for the fire engine we just recently acquired, so that is what the purpose of this is, and we would just hope you all consider this for approval.
Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion for resolution 3165.
Make a motion to approve resolution number 3165.
Second.
Have a motion to approve by Councilmember Hilton and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion? Yes, sir.
I noticed there's a $200 yearly membership fee. So are we voting on this for one year, two year, three year?
It could just be indefinite. I've never seen a membership fee before, so that surprised me when I saw that in here, because normally there's not a membership fee. But we definitely need it for this year, and if it's something we don't need next year, we just won't pay the fee. Thank you for bringing that up, because I forgot to mention it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton. Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Move to item E, resolution number 3166.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the city to purchase information technology services from Waypoint Solutions LLC through the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance.
Yes, sir.
All right, basically, the city has already budgeted for this year $55,000 for computer and software. I'm asking that we be allowed to spend $45,559 to go towards helping improve the security of the city's networking computers. The solution will be sold through Waypoint, but it's actually going to be purchased through the co-op, so we're not required to bid it out. We're purchasing at a discounted price. But we have the money. I'm just asking for your permission to spend this amount to help improve the city's security.
Right, we had this budgeted during the, we talked about it a little bit, I think, during the budget hearings. You know, big concern is the security of our networks, and everybody's been reading about... about.
There's been, this week, there's been a number of attacks. One of the biggest programs used by IT tech, this is myself, to manage computers actually got hacked, so a number of cities are falling victim to it. Their computers are being held hostage literally by hackers. This solution would help protect the network as well as, it includes software that'll monitor the computers as well as help educate the end users, which was one of the big initiatives I want to bring into the city. Just common stuff like, don't click on links, any emails from people you don't know. If a user clicks on one, their solution will pop up a little educational website telling them why they shouldn't click on it and educate them on common dangers and stuff.
And even the city council's received some of those phishing emails recently.
Yeah, there were a bunch of them, including the one pertaining to be from the HR manager recently.
All right, thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion for resolution 3166.
Make a motion to approve resolution number 3166.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Councilmember Hilton and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, I had a question.
Yes, sir.
Is this, is this fee, is this a one-time fee? I know all the licensing in the users that are listed here below, do they?
Yes, there is a one-time onboarding fee, then for the other part of the solution, those are just one-time fees for that.
So, these, these programs, they will update, obviously they'll?
They'll help monitor the computers for extra security to help the antivirus, the end-user training on phishing attacks, the bad websites, as well as monitoring the network for any potential breaches, hackers trying to break into computers. Computer might get infected with virus and try to reach out to hackers' computers and it'll detect it and help notify me so we can block it on the firewall.
Yeah, I saw the quote here. I just didn't see like a contract or user agreement.
Basically, the quote is, the actual contract, we sign it, it's for one year, yeah, one year. They're supposed to be sending me some updated paperwork too. So, once I get that, I'll be happy to come back to the city council and show you guys any changes.
I have.
Anyone else? I had the same, the same question as Vice Mayor. If there are any, you know, annual subscription after the initial purchase?
Yes, there'll be a yearly fee. It should be the total $45,559 minus the one-time onboarding fees. But, they did tell me during my conversations with them that if, right, if the software and stuff does change, like any other vendor, vendors, so the prices may go up or down, down, and we would also receive discount counts. If the pricing goes too high, becomes unrealistic the following year, then we have the option not to renew it, and that's what I'm going to do if it becomes unrealistic.
Okay.
Tell them thank you and look for another solution. But, right now, based on the other vendors I've looked at, price-wise, this looks like to be the most realistic one, the most affordable.
Okay, thank you. Yes, definitely something that's needed. There's a lot of hacking and ransomware and stuff going. The other question, is there any type of warranty or, what's the word I'm looking for, service in case we get hacked or attacked, that they will financially support?
From talking to them, they are supposed to be sending me updated information. If we follow through and set up their software, and they're actually going to send us two hardware appliances, appliances, because once I bring this in, my goal is also to redo the city's entire network. So, we'll have a device over in the PD, then a device over here in City Hall that will monitor the networks in both locations. If we install those devices as well as the software on the computer to their specific locations, and if something does happen, they'll reimburse the city up to a certain amount, depending on how we met their level of setting up things. But, I'm waiting on that information, because they said that's just Brad knew, so the sales rep want to make sure he actually got proper information from his higher-ups before providing it.
Okay. Yeah, please, please follow up on that. That's important to know those levels of reimbursement in case we do have a situation.
And hopefully with the redundancy and the backups that we've been putting together with our networks and everything else, the if, heaven forbid, something happened, the exposure would be minimal.
Yeah, this is just one more piece to the puzzle that I'm trying to implement, and I'm hoping this, when I bring in a company to help redo the city's network, that'll help also improve the security.
Awesome, all right. I don't see any other questions, so roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes.
Resolution number 3166 pass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to item F, resolution 3167.
A resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee authorizing the city of East Ridge to apply for and accept the PEP Risk Management Pool Safety Partners Matching Grant Program.
Yes, this is one of the grants we apply for each year. This one is used to purchase shoes, the yellow that the guys wear, the public works guy wears, safety glasses, anything to do with safety, and then we're able to get reimbursed for half.
About to what, $6,000, I think? And you can get $3,000 back?
Yeah, we get $3,000 back.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion for resolution 3167.
I make a motion to approve resolution 3167.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Councilmember Witt and a second by Vice Mayor Chauncey. Do we have any discussion? I see none. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton. Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes.
Resolution 3167 pass. We'll move to item G, resolution 3168.
A resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee authorizing participation by the city of East Ridge in the TIPS Purchasing Cooperative.
Yes, Mayor and Council, we're asking council's approval to become a member of the interlocal purchasing system. There's no fee or obligation to this, to become a member of the TIPS. The building department will be using TIPS if approved by council to be purchasing new permitting and code enforcement software in the near future.
Which was budgeted.
Which was budgeted, sorry.
So, it's another purchasing cooperative.
Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion for resolution 3168.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Vice Mayor Chauncey and a second by Councilmember Hilton. Do we have any discussion? I see none. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes.
Resolution number 3168 pass.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Move to item H, resolution number 3169.
A resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee approving the negotiation of and contracting to purchase certain real property located at 5302 Stone Street, East Ridge, Tennessee for the purpose of constructing an animal control facility.
I'm starting, you want me to start?
Um.
I can start.
Yeah, go ahead and start.
Okay, I passed out to council a couple pages dealing with the property in question. As you all know, the animal control facility we have now is very, very out of date, and for many years, we have been trying to find a solution to that problem. We've looked at properties to have them fall through. We've actually been trying, one other place to try to purchase some property, it wasn't the best, it was right on Ringel Road, there might have been traffic issues, things of that nature. That basically fell through as well. This property, which is located off of Stone Street, behind Fernando's, seems to fit the bill for what we really need for this property. It's long, it's wide, it's about 100 feet wide, about 388 feet long. It sort of fits the blueprint of what we sort of need for property out there. If you look at the four pages I gave you, the first page basically shows the property, the outline of the property. As you see, it's about 100 feet, approximately 100 feet wide, and like I said, 385, 388 feet long. If you look at the second page, you'll see a picture of the current animal shelter property. The dimensions of that are basically 120 feet wide by 82, long, excuse me, by 82 feet wide. And you can see the whole complex within it, and you have sanitation below it and the water treatment facilities above it. And then if you look at the third picture that I put in here, that shows those same dimensions, the 120 feet wide, long by the 83, 82 to 83 feet wide, how the current facility would fit on that property. And as you see, there's plenty of extra room on that property if we just did the small facility that they have now, which is very outdated and small, and we realize that. So, that's one thing we're looking at. And if you look at the fourth one, we know that everything from that point forward, which is above where the drainage ditch is, if we use that as the site of our buildable property, you could currently fit two of the animal shelter properties within that. That includes all the buildings, the accessory buildings and the parking they have, would all even fit within that. Our goal is to put the, like I said, the animal shelter here, the animal, excuse me, control facility here. The front part on Stone Street would be the parking lot. Behind that, we would have a building that would be elongated. We would have different sized kennels. I've talked to Crystal some about this. Some would be, we have a few that are larger than the other ones, because when you have the big dogs, you want to be able to have room for them. Cat facility, also an area for accessory building, which would be able to fit the storage for a lot of the needs they have. The back area, we went out and looked at again today, like I said, there is a drainage ditch that goes through. It's not a very wide drainage ditch, but there's a drainage ditch. The other side of that can also be used and cleared some if we want, because they have had problems with areas for volunteers to walk the animals, and that would also really help with that as well. So, we think the actual dimension of this property really helps with what we're trying to do. And we've heard from some of the people in the community, even we heard tonight, dealing with areas such as noise and with smell and things of that nature. Well, construction methods have changed a lot with animal shelter facilities, especially in the last couple decades, where we have, you know, if we house the animals within the facility where they sleep at night and stuff inside, you would also have drains and things that are put in there specifically to be able to help with the cleaning of the kennels and things of that nature. There may be areas outside where they can walk. We would be very cognizant of barking at night, we understand that. Matter of fact, they even have to go check on other animals in the city that bark at night, so them and the police, so we know that is an issue. The smell should not be an issue, as I said, dealing with the hygiene and the way that this would be, would be created. We would look at some of the other animal shelters, I know Crystal already has, looked at some of the other shelters that we have or that are in the area to get some ideas that would be good for us to, to be able to move forward with this. And so, we just think this is a very good piece of property for us to be able to use. It's not right on Ringel Road and doesn't have to be, but it's still close enough where it's in the center part of the city, which will help, help them to be able to respond to calls and to be able to get to a lot of the areas of the city pretty quick. And I do want Crystal and Michael to come down here for a quick second. I told them they were going to have to speak. It's good practice. Just to talk about the suitability of the land from a codes perspective, a building codes perspective and a zoning perspective, and then Crystal can chime in if she'd like.
Well, the current facility is roughly, I think, about 1,200 square feet, somewhere around there. Obviously, if you take that structure and place it here, it would meet the current, you know, setback requirements, because this parcel is, it's a split zone parcel. It's one of those weird ones that was encompassed, you know, when they had that blanket rezone back in the eighties, as Kenny's mentioned many times over this, this council. But, yeah, as far as the setback requirements, you could meet those pretty much with the 70-foot wide building on there. Obviously, there's an R3 complex next to it. As a good neighbor, you'd want to add some screening there just to keep it a little bit quiet. Maintaining that rear buffer would also be great for the center that's behind that as well, using it as a dog area or a walking track or something like that. Other than that, I mean, it is a great site. It's almost, site was made for that type of, you know, building, so. And when you see animal shelters, you don't, usually seeing a rectangular building with, you know, a long corridor, which would fit this site perfectly, so.
Anything you'd like to add that I didn't mention?
No, Michael covered it. I mean, it would fit perfect. The front entrance beats towards Stone Street, parking up front, walking track in the back. We could have a road going down the side, kind of giving us an extra space between Rebecca, so we could unload animals in the back instead of unloading animals in front, in front of people pulling in, you know, doing adoptions and stuff like that. So, this property is perfect, actually.
And once again, it being Zone R1, we'd handle this just like we did Fire Station 2. It was in a residential area. It's a use on review. It's fire halls or other, you know, public structures, so.
And I want to also recognize the other people here that are from animal control. I see big smiles on their faces with this being on the agenda.
Thank you, sir. And thank you and staff for going down and looking at this. This has been something that I have been actively working on and looking at for quite some time, and run across this piece of property, talked with the owner, and he was very willing to work with us. I feel we've got a good reasonable price for this piece of property at the location that it is, and that's Emerson Russell. He's been great. He's in agreement with this, so if we get majority vote on this, we can secure this piece of property and then start looking for the construction side of a new shelter. So, I want to thank Emerson, and I too believe when I run across this and met with him that this is an ideal spot, center of town, off Ringel Road. So, that's all I have to say at this time, and we'll see if we have any discussion, but normally I pass and don't make motions or seconds, but in this point in time, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to approve resolution 3169.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mayor Williams, and we have a second by Councilmember Hilton. Do we have any discussion?
One.
Yes, sir.
I have no objection to building an animal shelter, okay? My only objection is, when I pulled this up through the Hampton County accessories property, got the current property assessment, we're offering three times what's on this thing here, and I just can't vote for giving three times what the county says that pays properties for, but I'm not against the animal shelter being built, so.
All right. Mr. Listford, would you like to address that? We, we, go ahead, I'll let him.
I'm sorry. When I was directed to go and find some due diligence on this property and also to prepare the sale agreement, one thing we went is we talked to the appraiser that we've used for other matters to ask him for comparable sales and ask for a broker, a broker price opinion. And a broker price opinion is not an actual appraisal, it is a broker price opinion that is based upon a review of comparable sales in the area, based upon doing the best they can to find comparable property, size, and uses. What came back, the, Mr. Spillman provided back to me, really indicated that the per acreage comparable measures anywhere between, really, 110,000 to 130,000 for this property. Now, I asked him to run some comparables, and he ran a few. One he gave us was a 1502 Smith Street. That one came out to around 234,000 if you do a comparable, you know, this, this property's about a .9 acre, and so if you do a .9 acre, the 1502, it's a .25 acre, and that one has about a $65,000, and so when you do the multiplication and take that up to a .9, you'd be looking at around a 234. By comparison, I tried to find other vacant properties in and around East Ridge. This one, I asked Mr. Spillman, I said, why do you have this one when the county has it assessed at around 49, or 43, 42, 900? And he told me, he said, your county appraisals are different in terms of what the basis for the appraisal is relative to what a professional appraisal is. The professional looks at property for purposes of its existence. The professional looks at property for purposes of its existence as well as its prospective uses. County goes out, when they do appraisals, they are limited by statute to do existing only. They can't do an assessment on the prospective value. And so that's why you see here, it's valued at 42,900, but Mr. Spillman valued it somewhere between, actually, 110 to 139, 110, 139,000. And so that's where I think city administration went to Mr. Russell and talked to him, and he said he would agree to 125,000. There are other comparables. There's one on, you know, you could always make arguments. There's one at 5413 Ringel. It's, it is, I've got it at .44 acres for 116,000. So when you do the multiple, that comes out to 100, 237,000. So, you know, from a value standpoint and talking to the professional, Mr. Spillman, he said 125 is a good value for property. He values somewhere between 110 and 139.
Can I ask one quick question on that? I assume that 42,900 is the appraisal from last year that hasn't been entered in what the new reappraisal amount is?
I don't know the answer to that. I'm looking, I only have access to the tax card. I don't have access to the big stuff, so.
Well, I've got access to it's current, so that's all I give back.
I don't know if the new appraisals are in there yet because they're still redoing the recertifications.
Most of your tax, I mean, it may be that in October 1, when your tax notice goes out, that's when they have, I don't know the answer to that. By way of comparison, if you go two lots over, two lots over is a property, it's a vacant, it's exactly two spots, I mean, two lots over to the east. Now, that is a piece of property that's got, it's a 1.74. But if you did a comparison value, that one came out to 246,000 for the .9 acres. Ours that we had to offer here is a .9 acres at 125. And again, that's just two spots over. So that's, I'm not a realtor, I'm not an appraiser. I just asked Shannon Spillman to go do this for me, and this is the information he provided. Let me say a few things about the agreement. I did meet with Mr. Russell today.
Can I add a couple of things before you move into the agreement? I'm not sure why it feels, why that it's appraised at 42K. I did see that as well. And that's the reason I asked for some due diligence on this. But I'd be willing to bet you, you couldn't buy an almost acre parcel of land, one block off of Ringel Road or Max Smith for 42, $43,000. I will also remind the council that we did agree to purchase a previous spot, one block over, that was about a third of the size of this one for $55,000. So if you do the math, three times that, that's 165. So I still think we're getting a sweet deal for this price. So, and I'll, you go ahead and mention.
One observation, the lot two down, two down was 1514 Rebecca Drive is the one that I looked at. And again, that's 1.74 acres, but that one had a sale price, June 1, 2021, it was right a month ago, of $476,000. It's a vacant property of 1.74. The current property value is 140,000 per the tax card. So, and it goes back to what I asked Mr. Spillman, what is your considerations relative to what the county goes into? And he said, county's limited to existing property that can't factor in prospective uses. This sale here, a month ago, for 476,000 for the 1.7 acres, is a value that was come up with or derived because of the prospective use of this property, not its current existence. So that's why you see such a discrepancy in county values versus an actual appraisal. I was going to, I'd met with Mr. Russell this afternoon, right before we got here, and asking him, I'd sent a copy of this to him. When I was asked to prepare a sale agreement, I prepared it and sent it to Mr. Russell, and he gave it back to me. And there are just some slight changes from what was published and is in your booklet. And so I need to make sure and bring these out. So if there is a motion to approve, we need to make sure we, the motion to approve is going to be based upon what I understand Mr. Russell is willing to agree to. It just saves us an opportunity, I can, we can approve it as is. I'll go back to Mr. Russell, but I can tell you, I know, not going to accept it as it's proposed, as I had it drafted to Mr. Russell. So, and those changes I can get to really quickly. And if I had any concerns, I will raise those here. The, or, Section 4B in your packet has a provision that the purchaser may, at its sole discretion, terminate the agreement, what Mr. Russell proposed, and let's just remove that. And the, anything, there's conditions for closings. If you look at Section 10, those remain unaltered from what Mr. Russell and I talked about. So my point is, I am comfortable if you take out 4B, that the city can terminate for any reason because there's still conditions to closing. Traditionally, in real estate deals, buyers can get out if the property is not marketable for whatever reason. We've already done title on it. There's not a title issue that we can see. But in addition to, I did a rudimentary search. Mr. Russell said, I, he will pay the city for a title commitment policy. So he's willing to pay for the title insurance to guarantee good title on it. And those are issues that I had concerns about. And he said, well, I don't want to sell something that you have a right to get out of at the last second. I will guarantee the items that you have a concern about, so we'll remove it. And that's why Section 4B, in a new version, would not have that provision. And so, because again, there's still conditions to closings. The other provisions are, he, the small, we have to agree on where to close. Choice Title is a company that I think has just a history of knowledge with respect to his properties. It's, you know, he wants to close there. I've used that company. It's, there's nothing about it other than it's just, it's a good company. So he wanted to put it in Section 5, Choice Title. Section 7, I've modified to clarify that the seller would pay the title commitments. You see in 7A there, that it would remain as the seller. With respect to the other costs that you have in there, deed, recordation, the buyer will pay for that. And that's standard. That's always negotiable, but that's standard. And I had that proposed to Mr. Russell, and he said he's in agreement with that. The, the only other section that came in was Section 17 regarding attorney fees, is it's just the parties would bear their own cost to preparation of this in disputes. You all already have me on retainer, so we, that would be one that would be removed. And so 17 attorney fees would be removed out there. We've got, this is already prepared, so we've really got, it's really superfluous anyway because we've got this prepared already. And then lastly, there was discussion, and Mayor, you may want to talk, as to, you know, this is something that Mr. Russell has said he's felt heavy about trying to contribute something to the city. And so the discussion that we had is if something was erected in there for obstruction, that it would have some bearing or reflection of Emerson.
Mr. Russell's name.
That'd be something that we'd put in here.
Yes. Yeah, we'd like to recognize him and with the naming of the, of the building. All right, so we have the amended, so.
Yeah, so what we'll do, I think the best way to handle this, just so that we do get it under contract, Mr. Russell and I went through and we prepared it. I typed out a new one. I did have it up. The items that are changed are exactly what I went over in this meeting here today. I'm comfortable from a legal standpoint where we sit. If the council is comfortable with what I went over, then the motion, I think, to make it clear would be, and I've got this, Ms. Middleton, would be to approve the purchase pursuant to the real estate purchase and sale agreement as amended by the discussion of the city attorney. And we have that draft here and we'll attach it as a copy to the amendments so that we have a copy of what it was discussed with Mr. Russell.
All right, so I entertain a motion for the amendment as discussed by the city attorney.
I make a motion to approve.
Have a motion by Vice Mayor Chauncey and a second by Councilmember Hilton for the amendment. Do we have any discussion? Roll call for the amendment.
Vice Mayor Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Stay.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Okay, amendment is passed, so now we'll move to the original.
As amended.
Yes, so Resolution 3169 as amended. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey?
Yes.
No, sir. I'm sorry, we don't have any, citizen communication was earlier. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Vice Mayor Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Like I said earlier, I'm not objecting to the animal shelter, just to the price, so I'm about no.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Resolution 3169 as amended passed. We'll move to item I. I'm sorry, sir.
Crystal, go find me a grant.
Yeah. Need some grants. We'll move to, I, thank you. Thank you, everyone. We'll move to item I to discuss, take action for the dog park.
Good evening. Here, I'll pass these. All right, so I have created a small packet for everyone. It is including the budget that we went over last week, or Diane mentioned last week. Let me grab that, hold on just a second. Diane, how many did we put in that? Do you remember? Here. Okay, so this packet is the budget that Diane mentioned last week, or two weeks ago, that had to do with the Springville Dog Park. We were awarded that grant. I have reached out to the Dog Park Dash Committee over the last week to get a little bit more information regarding that. When initially applying for the Dog Park Dash grants, they required a specific property address to be listed on this application, which was 1623 Springville Road. In the packet that was passed around, it'll show the initial plat map that was listed. We went through the DRC Building GIS downtown to have those lot lines abandoned. And then, once those were reviewed and signed, we were able to get a specific property address to submit with the initial application. And this, this property address was with the proposed dog park that I submitted. If you have any questions about that, I can look over the paperwork that we had. I know that there were some questions about where we wanted the dog park to be and if the grant could be utilized there or split between two different parks. As far as the agility equipment, I do have a couple of quotes from Play Corps and, let's see. We have Play Corps Ambulance Products, so that's listed on this description here on the budget. If we have questions on that, we can look over that as well. And then the eligibility requirements for the dog park, they required us to come up with a construction budget as well as an operating budget. The construction budget was pretty straightforward. I put on there all of the equipment that we thought we may need as well as an installation service fee if we wanted to utilize them to put the equipment together. If not, we could use some of the staff here as well as maybe create a volunteer date to get some help to put the equipment together. The operating budget, I spoke with Diane. You want to go over that?
Yes, the operating budget, because you have to have one for three years, correct?
Correct.
Will be a line item within the general recreation budget. So it will be, it will say for the dog park to show that it is, you know, budgeted. So that's where it will be.
And as far as the, the only other grant commitment that we needed to discuss was in the eligibility and commitment requirements, the city of East Ridge or any other contestant winner must commit to maintain and operate the dog park at the listed property above for at least three years at the existing property from the date that it opens to the general public.
And going through the, paging through the grant, and you mentioned this, I just wanted to, I know that was a question when I reviewed the tape from the, it's not a tape, it's a recording, right? From the last meeting.
During your age.
Yeah, I know. Where you talked about the, we addressed, I know that was something that was important. And I know in the application specifically, you had to have the exact address you were going to use in order to, to do the grant. And then you said that they came out and.
We did. We looked over, we walked throughout the property. We did a survey on that, abandoned those lot lines, and then we looked throughout to see for flooding requirements and things of that sort. The property did go before, almost, it was like a committee for the Dog Park Dash Foundation, and that was part of the grant application that they approved for us.
That they had to approve the property, is what it said in the founding thing. So if the money is attempted to be shifted or split, I can't say 100%, but it could jeopardize the grant.
Correct. They would have to be contacted, which I have reached out to the Dog Park Dash Committee over the last two weeks to see if we could get a definite answer over what may happen if we did switch properties, but we didn't have a definite answer this time.
Did you figure those people have other jobs? They're probably volunteering on the committee, so trying to get ahold of somebody once they've already made their announcements was hard, but I know you've tried, so.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
I'd like to thank you for all your hard work.
Yes.
Thank you.
Single-handedly got this grant. I'm very proud of him, very, very appreciative he's, he works with us.
Yes, it was his first grant.
And not the last, we hope.
Maybe working on that dog shelter grant.
You set high expectations, first grant, and you won it, so we expect the same from now on.
No promises, but we'll work hard to get those.
All right, any other discussion?
Yes, I'd like to have one question. Which end of the lot is this going to be on?
There is an existing parking lot at Springville Park now, so it would be the closest to that end. We would like to utilize the existing parking lot.
And the reason why I ask that is, I remember back when the city bought this property down there with the flood money we got, give to us. That house, it's all the way up to the end. Best of my recollection, the water got about halfway up in that last lot next to that house. I was wondering if it wouldn't be feasible to have a, I call it a topo survey, but elevation survey, to see how much dirt would have to be hauled in to get it out of the flood zone.
I, I'm not the expert on floodways and things of that nature, but as you know, I'm not being smart when I say this, but a lot of parks are built in floodways for that reason. And I know that land, and you were here when, when you said this happened, I'm assuming it was bought with CDBG flood remediation dollars, which means it has to be used for, you know, you can't build on it again, and, you know, it's city property and it's a, it's a great thing to use it for. And I've seen it flood over there twice since I've been here, but it's just like a Camp Jordan, the water comes in, two days later, the water's gone.
Correct.
And one thing we did talk about was that we looked at the amount of sunshine that was over there, and, you know, the trees are in the back and try to have it a little more up so you have more sun time for that property. For if it does rain and to be able to have grass and to be able to have a section where we would be able to, to make sure that if this section wears down, we can rest it and be able to utilize another section to be able to use within, within this if necessary, if we want to modify that a little bit. But that was important, too. So I don't know if we can, you know, how, how much it would cost to have to raise it, like you mentioned, Mr. Cagle, but with it being a floodway, everything that's in there will be pretty much, I'll say, okay. I don't know the right word to use.
Weather resistant.
Weather, weather resistant and everything else, whether it wasn't a floodway or not. That may, that may take a couple of days out of it, but as you've seen at Camp Jordan, and Adam can attest to this, when we've had floods come in and they go out almost as quick because of the, the type of flooding that we have there, it's not stagnant flooding, it usually heals. it usually heals pretty quickly, would you say?
Yeah, I mean, at Camp Jordan, it'll, it sometimes goes away in 24 hours.
Now, we'll add to that, that the representative from Play Corps discussed, uh, different types of ground material to use in the park to help saturate water, since it isn't a flood zone. Different types of gravel or mulch that we could use to allow the water to, to go away if the park were to flood.
But it still may not hurt to get a topo, just to, to look, or at least, there's, there's already topos that are done for all those areas anyway, I know, but just to at least look to see if there's something we could do to mitigate it a little bit, within legal reasons, and if it's cost effective, if it may help. I'm all for looking to see if there's ways.
If I remember correctly, and I've done a couple of houses in that area for, I think the base flood elevation in that area is like 680, so if you compare that to the house across the street, Mr. Cagle, or the one...
When it's been raised up.
Yes, sir, you're looking at fill, uh, you know, eight foot maybe.
Oh, that one.
So, I mean, it, that's a slow war.
Mike, I remember the house that was next door to it.
Yes, sir.
Uh, my brother-in-law lived in it, and, uh, the water did not get in that house, and it was three blocks off the ground.
Wow, yeah, so that's a lot harder than I thought it would be, but...
If that helps.
But if we're able to do something with the material, like you said, and, uh, if it's weather resistant, and with the grass and everything else, we could hopefully mitigate part of that, that concern.
Awesome.
Yeah, I also want to thank Cameron for all your hard work on the grant, appreciate that. My, my stance is still pretty much where it's been, you guys know, I, I think we should have the dog park down here at City Hall for reasons I've mentioned before, just to add to the amenities that we already have down here. I'm kind of disappointed that this council didn't have any input, uh, to begin with, on where we wanted to decide to put it down when we, uh, applied for the grant. But we've, that ship has sailed. We, uh, we currently have, uh, donations for fencing and some park benches. Uh, I, I, I want to keep those resources together, so we can have the best possible dog park that we can have. So, you know, again, I, I just, um, I, I, I really think it should be down here at City Hall for many different reasons, more reasons to have it down here at City Hall than, than at Springville Park, that's my opinion.
Thank you, sir, um, are you, I don't want to put words in your mouth, are you considering an additional park here that you're considering, or invest the donations in this particular solution that's been brought forward with the grant, it's been identified and earmarked for? Um, or again, um, a, a second, um, dog park?
Well, I, I guess we, we don't really have any, the representatives from the Dog Dash Grant has not told us that we cannot move this location.
I don't have a definite answer at this time. I will say...
That was a question that I really wanted to have today at this council meeting answered. But we decided to write the email and ask them yet, one day before the meeting, so maybe if we can...
The contact that I had initially for the Dog Pa, the Dog Park Dash Committee, she resigned from the Boyd Foundation, so she no longer works there, she did give me some further contacts to reach out, and that's when we sent those emails. Um, I'll add though, that the dog park, um, if it's not in operation for three years, um, from the date that it is open to the public, the city is responsible for the full amount of the grant. So if we do place the dog park behind City Hall, there's an investor that wants to potentially look at McBride School, they don't want the dog park there, then the city is responsible for the grant money that was used to construct the park.
I'm fully aware of that requirement, and I, I think it's this council's decision, whether it be, uh, three years down the road, uh, if, if, if a developer wants to buy the McBride School and do something with it, he's got six, six and a half more acres out there that he can do whatever he wants to do with it, and we can keep the dog park. So, again, I, I just, uh, like I said, I wish we had a little more input at the beginning of applying for this to, to decide where we were going to put it. Uh, again, nobody's answered that question for me, if, in fact, if we cannot move it. Uh, I don't want to lose the grant money, but at the same time, if they say, if they say no, you can't do that, which I, I don't, if you could really talk to someone who really, uh, knows and has, you know, the ability to make that decision, I, I'd like to hear it from them. I'm not a hundred percent opposed to, uh, splitting it up, I just, I, I really think that we need to have a dog park down here at City Hall. So I, I guess, I mean, I'd like to see, um... Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I feel like I'm the only person that has an opinion on this.
So, again, I don't want to put words in your mouth, so are you wanting to wait to see if the, the correspondence back before you bring this back for...
I guess if we're going to wait two more weeks to, uh, to get a definite answer, so...
Assuming we get one in two weeks, there's no, there's no phone numbers, there's no what, the one person he was able to get ahold of, said they weren't even working there anymore, that's why he sent the email to the address, hoping he will, will get something back.
And I actually have two email addresses, and I got a kickback from one of them today, so I have one email that's out, hopefully someone has received it. The contact that I spoke with that no longer works with the Boyd Foundation wouldn't pass along any further contacts, she just took my contact information to hand out to the next person.
I'm in agreement, I would like to see the dog park here on, um, City Hall property as well. Uh, I think we should wait a couple of weeks and see if we can get an answer. Maybe if one of the council members should email us. I'd be willing to make a phone call.
Likewise, I'm not opposed to it, I, I think it's a great idea having one here, um, and I think it's a good idea if we have two.
But I don't want to lose the grant.
Agreed, agreed.
I think there's a way to grant fully intact at Springville, and then do something here as well.
Yeah, I, I don't think we're going to lose the grant by just inquiring if we can make change of location. I'll make a motion to table this until the, uh, next council meeting, July 22nd council meeting.
Second motion.
We have a motion to table, uh, discuss take action by Vice Mayor Chauncey in a second, by Councilmember Halton. Do you have any discussion?
So, any other, uh, anything that we can do, I guess, if we do get someone on the phone, or someone returns our email, uh, can we have some sort of plan, uh, some sort of budget, amended budget, uh, and actually saying why we're going to be moving this?
I have actually had somebody talk to me that wants it at Springville, so I don't know if that makes a difference or not, but they live in that area, and they would like to have the dog park in that area. So, I'm not opposed to two dog parks.
Well, I, I guess my, my question was, if we do get someone on the phone, we do get somebody to reply to our email, can we have some sort of back, uh, uh, a proposal here to, as to why we're asking this to be moved? Because we have the, the, the fencing donations, and we have some park bench, park bench donations that we would like to change the budget, because I don't know, is this, um, that, that would definitely change the budget, right? So...
I mean, if the fencing isn't quoted on the budget, um, there are some benches and small hoop jumps and things of that sort on this budget, if you're wanting to use your donations at one park, rather than use the grant at one park and then have the other park...
Did you say you don't have fencing on this budget?
It isn't on here, no, sir. I have the quotes, but at the bottom, there isn't fencing on here, but we're not...
I don't have my calculator on me, what, what?
It was, it was around 16,000.
So, all, all, all these numbers here in this line item, what did they amount to?
I think it was around 14 to 16,000, I don't have an exact number at this time. But we do have the fencing quotes, I have two or three of those, Adam, help me get those.
So the, the, this amount here is roughly 15 to 16,000, then we got 15 to 16,000 worth of fencing that's not on here. That's a little over 32,000, are we gonna... I, I guess, uh, is there, because when we, when we submitted this for the application, we didn't have any fencing donated at the time, so where are we going to come up with the extra money for the fencing?
Well, we knew we were going to get 25,000, we weren't, we didn't think we'd get the 100,000, but we knew we were going to get 25,000.
That we were going to apply for 25,000.
Yes, we were applying for 25. So the fencing would have come with, you know, with the rest of it, because we can change up a little bit on what we get.
And there's extra money within the park's budget, we could probably tap to get some of the fencing, because it, it is a park.
Yes.
And I will say, when we first did bring up this, uh, we did announce in one of the meetings, I believe, that we were applying for this grant, and we did say it was at Springville Park at that time. We didn't ask for extra input from the council, yes, you're true, but we did mention we were applying for a grant at Springville Park. And I do want to say that I've, I've had some good conversations with Vice Mayor Chauncey on this, I have, I, I would love to see two dog parks. I think, you know, a, a dog park behind City Hall would be great too. I know the one thing we talked about was making sure that if there is a development, that it wouldn't hinder the development, and if it doesn't hinder any development, I think the more dog parks, I mean, it's a dog night, any, anything we can do to help the animals, and he's rich, I'm all for it.
So if you take the 16 and the 16, you're looking, I think, Vice Mayor, you mentioned 32, if you got the grant for 25, you're looking at seven that would come out of...
Of, of the park budget.
Of the park budget. So I guess the question comes to, again, I, I don't want to run the discussion, but is, do we want to have one? And where, or do we want to have two? Is that kind of what, I'm, again, I'm just trying to engage and talk through this.
If I can, yeah, I'm, I'm... You've already had a motion to table, so.
Oh. And I'm also in discussion, I asked for discussion.
Well, I guess I don't know how much cooperation and, and how much funds we're going to get if we just say, okay, we've got the fencing down here at City Hall, and the park benches, probably raise a little bit more money to do some other things, but at some point, I mean, I've got to hand it over to you and say, here, you do the rest of it, utilities and, uh, and all that sort of thing, other things that go along with it that I'm probably forgetting right now, but, um, will, will that be a problem?
We can come up with those, I, thank you, that helps answer part of the question I was going to ask. That helps a little bit with what, what you're referring to, is trying to get a budget for that other site, trying to find out some of those asundery things over there, you know, what amenities you have within the fences, you know, that, that makes a big difference too. Um, if you're wanting more of a place for the dogs to be able to roam free and throw balls to, um, that might be a little different than having, nothing says you have to have an agility course in there, you know, if you just want a nice confined area for the dogs to be able to exercise in, you know, that obviously wouldn't cost as much. We were trying to make sure we were utilizing the 25, and we also had it, uh, to a point where the grant could be, you know, would look favorable for us for the, the amenities we had in it. But not all dog parks, like, have a lot of things in it, I mean, the one at Greenway, I think, has just one or two little wooden ramp things in, and that's about it. So, it, it also depends on what amenities, but we will at least get how much it would cost to get water and some of those things over there for you, yes, sir.
Well, again, I'd, like I said, if you get someone on the phone, they return your email, I just want to have some sort of reason as to why we're asking them to, to do that. And then, if they say, hey, they, they agree to, that they'll let you move it if you want, then this council can make a decision if, if we want to do that or not at the time.
Okay. Thanks, sir, any other discussion? I see none, so we have a motion in a second to table, roll call.
Vice Mayor Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Halton? Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Move to item J, certificate of compliance for MAPCO to sell wine.
Okay, this is basically an item just, council doesn't vote on this, this is just a notation for the, uh, the minutes and the record, that we received a application for certificate compliance for the MAPCO on Ringel Road to be able to sell wine. I personally was surprised getting this, because I didn't think they'd be able to, but, because I thought it was more of a grocery stores. But I would assume that the, I mean, and it's not our job to decide whether they can sell wine or not. Our job, according to state law, is to go, go through the certificate compliance, to sign it, and all we're doing is we're signing the fact that a background check was performed, which complied and showed that there was nobody associated with the business that we know of that was convicted of a felony within 10-year period, and an affirmation that the location complies with all commercial zoning laws adopted by the City of East Ridge in Hamilton County. And I received a, an item from codes and planning, the fact that the property located at 6514 Ringel Road is Zone C2 Commercial District, the property's been evaluated by the City of East Ridge Planning, and is in compliance with the currently adopted city codes for the selling of wine in the establishment. It's not up to us, or for the council, excuse me, to accept or deny this. It's just you are signing this application to say that we met those two criteria on this, and for there to be a record that it's done. The person then gets this information, gets this certificate from us, and they would go to the alcoholic, State Alcoholic Beverage Commission, and continue their, their trek there. And if it meets their requirements, they'll give it to them, if it doesn't, they won't. All, all our job is, is to sign this document, and I always like to make sure it's notated on the record, that it's been sent to us, and that it's awaiting signatures from either the mayor or majority of the council. That's about it.
Thank you, sir.
For, for you all to sign, should you desire, at the end of the meeting. But there's no vote required, is my point.
Thank you, sir, any questions?
Yeah, Chris, I, so, I just wanted to be clear, if I'm being asked to sign this certificate of occupancy, of certificate of compliance, not saying that I'm in favor of the gas station selling wine, and in fact, they, I'm just signing it saying they have met the two requirements, but from the City of East Ridge.
Correct.
That's it.
And you will have the original copies that we all need to sign? Ms. Middleton does, okay, so see her before you leave.
Thank you.
All right, that's all the items for the agenda, so now we will move to item K, which is discussion of the tentative agenda for July 22nd, 2021. We have no old business, and under new business, we have an unnumbered resolution for the personnel board appointment, and that would be a vacancy on the personnel board for Councilmember Halton's appointment, which, um, is vacated due to the loss of, of Ms. Francis Pope. Thank you. Uh, the other item, um, do you want to cover, do you want me to cover, we've got a notification?
I can introduce it, and kind of, this is council knows, um, Tuesday evening, I received a notice from Judge Halton. He had, um, notified us due to the family emergency that he was resigning. And so under, um, the City Charter, Section 6D, this council is charged with approving or appointing a successor until the next general, uh, citywide election, which in this case would be August of 2022. And, um, response to Mr. or Judge Halton's notice, I have been in consultation with the AOC, uh, the Administrative Office of the Court for the State of Tennessee. I've spoken with, um, the Hamlet County Judicial Branch in efforts to try to ensure that this body, as it goes through the appointment process, does something, I, uh, in, in other words, does something to continue the operations of this court. I understand in talking with multiple, uh, representatives from the District Attorney's Office, the County Judicial Office, as well as the AOC, that given COVID, that there's been a significant backlog of cases. The, it's like a 10 to 13-page docket here. Uh, I've received information from the Hamlet County Judicial, um, representatives that they are willing to fill in and help out until this body can either get the docket, you know, back to level, and they've offered to do that for free, and so that's an option that you all can consider. Uh, Judge McVeigh, Judge Sales, and Judge, um, I'll think of him in a second, uh, I'll think of it, uh, have offered to continue to ensure that this docket continues, once Judge Halton's, uh, his last, is, uh, the last day would be July 31st, since his resignation, that'll be the last day. And so whatever the first Tuesday after that, if this body hasn't come up with something that they've offered to come in... And so whatever the first Tuesday after that, if this body hasn't come up with something that they've offered to come in and service that, I will get, um, approve, or at least some sort of word back from the AOC that if this body wants to allow Hamlet County to cover it, that, uh, that is permitted and they can do that until the next general election. But I know that they have advised and Judge McVeigh has even said he would do this for free to help out this city and also be willing to train the incumbent, or whoever you all approve to try to get. The big thing is the continuation of the docket. It, it's, I understand they're staying until 10, 11 o'clock. Is that, is that right? Ms. Cassidy?
We, yeah. I've been working weekends and everything, trying to stay ahead of the game, but we're still a month behind. As far as not just, not the docket, but other work that we do after the docket. It's just building up and building up. Judge McVeigh, he has texted me yesterday and today, and I talked to Mr. Litchford about it. He can do it by interstate, he said.
Interchange.
Interchange, yeah. He's got the power to do that where he wouldn't have to be compensated. Judge Wilson from College Dale has offered to also, if you're willing to appoint somebody, he would be an appointed and he found out today from the Supreme Court and the AOC that he would be allowed to be compensated by two courts. So he can, he can do it here and he could also do College Dale and he would be compensated like Judge Hilton is now compensated until either you all appoint someone or the next election. So we need someone now. Now, uh, Judge Hilton, I spoke to him yesterday and today. He will not be, he will not be here next Tuesday, nor the 22nd. So I've been getting other judges to fill in, mostly Judge McVeigh. Judge Wilson has been sitting in, so both of them know our court. They know how we work. They've been here, Judge McVeigh has set in more than, what, 90% of the time that Judge Hilton's been out. He worked at where he, I guess Judge Hilton sat for him downtown, so they would switch. So there was no compensation that needed to be done. But with this, if you appointed Judge McVeigh to do it, he even said we could, you all could appoint Judge Wilson to do it and Judge McVeigh would be his backup. If you just took an attorney, which we can't have right now, I mean, we need someone right now. That's what I'm worried about, because we do general sessions. So we need a judge. If we, if you all went ahead and appointed an attorney, they would have to be sworn in and trained. And Judge McVeigh has offered to train them, but how much time is that gonna take? And bog down the docket even more than it is now? I mean, our docket is crazy until, and crime didn't stop during the pandemic. I mean, people think that it didn't stop. For some reason, it probably even got worse a little bit with the domestics and with the alcohol and this and that and the other things. So we are inundated with criminal cases, not, traffic is fine and an attorney can do traffic. They can do municipal. We've had attorneys sit in a lot for Judge Hilton, just to do traffic cases. So we're not worried about that. City code, traffic is fine. It's the criminal cases that both the DA's office is worried about and I am too, because we've done so much to create a good working court that it just, we don't need anything to tear us apart or bog us down any more than we already are, because it's not fair to us. It's not fair to the police officers. It's not fair to the citizens. I mean, and it's certainly not fair to the people that have court dates now that were really originally scheduled to be seen October, November and December of last year. We're just now seeing them. And to keep on putting them off and putting them off, first of all, I think there's some kind of a statute that says that you, you gotta get rid of those cases. I mean, I'm not sure of it, but we're running out of time and we just can't sit on hold and not have a judge. I mean, certainly not fair to the court and it's not fair to the citizens of East Ridge.
So this body will need to start, you know, take efforts. We've got a meeting in two weeks. The, um, the charter is not unclear as to when the appointment has to occur. It doesn't say if this body, but it can, has the ability to, if it wants to take advantage of the Hamlet County judges offer to do this until it either cleans the docket up, you all can readdress it. You know, you can talk to Ms. Cassidy and talk, but there are options you, um, if you appoint, that you would bring in that new judge. That judge would be serving as the judge and would have the authority once sworn in, uh, to do that and then would serve until the next election, which of course would be August of 2022.
My one statement on it, if I could, we, we discussed in the, and I think it's great that some of them want to, want to help us and do it without compensation. But I think the charter says you have to, unless there is a legal way, you can.
Interchange.
You can.
By interchange.
But, but in the charter, it actually says that they have, that they would receive, have to follow the same qualifications and receive the same compensation. It says that in the charter. Just that means.
I, I think if, uh, Judge Wilson is willing to, to step up and serve, I think he would be a great choice.
He is a great choice. He really, I mean, Judge Wilson.
And then if he needed to, and then if he needed to be absent, then Judge McVeigh.
Well, Judge Wilson, he would be, he would do it if you all appointed him to do it until the next election comes next August.
I think that's the best choice.
Judge McVeigh said that he would be his backup, like if, cause Judge Wilson does College Dale, which are, is on Wednesdays. So Judge McVeigh has offered, and I can show you all the text, he's offered to say that if Judge Wilson wants to do it, or if you all want to appoint him, he sat Tuesday night and he was just awesome. I mean, he sat for us before. He is just a wonderful person.
I don't think it would be smart to, for this body, to appoint someone, an attorney that is not trained. You would need somebody that's highly filled in, in criminal law.
Well, plus then come next to August, you let, the way I think it should be personally, is the citizens get to.
Right, and then let the citizens decide in August of 22.
And I probably should have clever, yeah, Judge McVeigh cannot be appointed to this position. He just said he would fill it.
Fill it.
You know, until this body appointed it. So maybe I misspoke and I'm sorry. And so if you had the arrangement that Ms. Hilton is, you know, that would work. And then if Judge Wilson couldn't be around for an evening, by interchange, they can get a fill-in for the evening.
Uh, Patricia, you said that Judge Wilson, is, is he a general sessions judge?
Yes, that's, College Dale is general sessions jurisdiction. They, and he sits for downtown criminal court sometimes too.
He sits College Dale, city attorney, uh, city judge.
Right.
But because it has concurrent general sessions jurisdiction, he's able to sit in Hamlet County. Now, by virtue of that, the Hamlet County judges can then come sit at, at College Dale, the same way we have general session concurrent jurisdiction here, which just means we're able to hear certain things. Whereas in Chattanooga, they hear traffic. They don't get to hear any misdemeanors there. Those go straight to general sessions. Hamlet County misdemeanors come to East Ridge here and the judge can decide, you know, adjudicate those. Felonies always go down to downtown county. But to answer the question, he is a city judge for College Dale with concurrent jurisdiction for general sessions.
The same as here.
Same as here, yeah.
And same as here.
Exactly, the same as here.
Well, I know you said you, we needed a general sessions judge. I just.
Well, that has general sessions jurisdiction. I mean, that's.
Can a motion be made at that?
You know, it, yes, I mean, one can. It, the charter provides that they appoint it and we can add that. We can, and we can move that up and put it as an item tonight. If we want to vote on that, if it's something you all want to wait two weeks, you can do that. But yeah, there's nothing stopping you from bringing it up and making that motion, because the resignation's been announced and by charter, you have to appoint.
If you all want to see Judge Wilson, he, I've asked him, because we won't have a judge for the next two weeks, if he could sit in and he's gonna check his schedule, but he may be here next Tuesday or he may be here the next Tuesday, if you want to actually physically see how he is. Thank you.
So.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Judge Wilson, if he's willing to do it for the money we've got budgeted for the same compensation till the next election.
I'll second that motion.
So we have a, a motion by Councilmember Cagle and a second by Councilmember Hilton for the appointment of Judge Wilson. Do we have any discussion? I have one, but is there any discussion?
Well, I, only concerns I have, and obviously I know we need to move fast and it's probably gonna be a yes for me. I guess from a legal standpoint, are, are we sure we should do this tonight? Or should we post this? Or should we advertise, or, you know, I don't know, just. Well, it's only concerns I have, so.
As a best practice, you could advertise it and take, you know, public consideration for the next two weeks. It's a best practice, you could do that. There is no legal requirement that you have to post or advertise. Nothing requires that.
Or have to have it on agenda for the next meeting.
Right, yeah, you, you can put this on the agenda for tonight and bring this in. Again, charter not only allows it, it requires you to do it, but you can do that tonight. If the idea is, let's, let's wait, um, you know, a best practice would like to be wait two weeks, bring it up where you've got it on the agenda. But there's nothing stopping you tonight.
And I guess the question I have is on this motion in the second is, this appointment, is this effective August the 1st? Or is this effective tonight?
That's a great question.
Just clarification that I was wanting to know.
That's a great question. So the, the actual appointment would be effective August 1st. This, the resignation that we got from Judge Hilton is, um, it says effective August 1st, but his last day would be July 31st. And so he is still the sitting judge. When I talked to him, he said, my understanding, he said he was going to be here. He may not, it sounds like on the 13th or 20th. But, um, he, Judge, if Judge Wilson is approved tonight, his appointment would start effective August 1st.
Can we not ask for the resignation effective immediately?
Yeah, we can ask and I can call Judge Hilton, ask him if he'll make it effective immediately. He, um, which would then be, I can call him tonight. If I, if I can get him, I'll ask him tonight and ask him to make it effective immediately so that it allows the city to go ahead. If you approve Judge Wilson, you've got the immediate transition rather than the next three weeks of, is it or is it not gonna be Judge Wilson?
You've got three weeks left, right?
Well, exactly. With the new information, two of the three weeks he's not gonna be here. So I'd assume that he would go ahead and just resign.
I can.
I don't like to assume.
I, I mean, I'll be honest with you, okay? I mean, um, he may show up next week. I don't know. I mean, he told me that, I asked him after he shocked me with this. I mean, I just said, he said that his last day on the bench would be July 27th, which is our last court date in July. So I said to him, I think it was today, I texted him or yesterday, I said to him, I said, will you be here next week or the week after? And he, or does that mean you won't be here the next two weeks? You'll only be here on the 27th? And he said, that's correct. So whether he changes his mind, I mean, I think it all depends on the situation that they're having to go through right now with the health of his wife's mother. I mean, it's just, she's deteriorating and I think that's what he bases like, because he, I mean, there's times when, like last time he was here, I said, will you be here next week? And he said, he couldn't answer that right now. It all depends. So she may be okay next week and they may show up next week and I may not have to have a sit-in judge. See, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I can't, I just know he's, you know.
Well, we can definitely ask. And we have, we have a motion and a second on the table.
Ms. Cassidy, a question?
Yes, sir.
Judge Wilson has already agreed to serve the next two, two weeks. So we're not gonna be without a judge till the.
He, he has offered, what he said is he would check his calendar and let me know about the next two weeks. Because he also has a law practice. So I haven't heard back from him about that yet. He did check with the state today to see if he was able to be paid and serve on two courts and they told him yes. So he, I asked him, I said, so that means I can mention you tonight at the council meeting? And he said, yes. And I, yes. So, but for the next two weeks, if Judge Hilton doesn't come or can't come, then it would either be Judge Wilson or Judge McVeigh.
Next question.
Yeah, one of the two.
So we're not gonna be without a judge or a court going on.
Correct, court will still be in session. Yes.
Okay. So I still have a motion and a second on the table. All right, so. Roll call, Ms. Milton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whit?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, that's all that we have on tentative agenda and we moved that item up to the, the actual agenda due to the resignation of the judge. Is there any other discussions, counsel? I see none. Thanks everyone for coming and attending. This meeting is adjourned.